Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Ryska, can you please read the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yanez?
Here.
Mrs. Yarco?
Present.
Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Muir?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we get going in our agenda tonight, I do want to make a brief comment with regard to the COVID pandemic that we are still, there is still a state of emergency here in the city of Sterling Heights that we're operating under. And with recent guidance from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, I want to say that in order to protect the health of everyone in attendance at tonight's public meeting, the city is still requiring strict adherence to the following protocols. All persons must wear a mask or face covering during this meeting unless medically unable to do so. And for those individuals who have indicated that they cannot medically tolerate a mask or face covering, the city's provided a designated safety area towards the back of the community room here to accommodate attendance at the meeting. You can be in that area without a mask if you're medically unable to wear a mask. That safety area is also available to those who may need to remove their mask for a brief period from time to time. See, there's a microphone back there, and it's available to use by those persons sitting in the designated safety area should they choose to comment at the appropriate time during public communications from citizens or during an agenda item. Please raise your hand if you are back there and you need to speak during those periods. All other people here need to be able to maintain social distancing of at least six feet at all times. So to assist in that, we ask you to remain seated during the meeting, except when necessary to leave the room or to approach the podium to speak. Residents addressing the city council at either podium, of course, may have removed their masks or face coverings when speaking at the podium, but please remember to wipe down the microphone before beginning your comments. If we adhere to these protocols, we're going to be able to continue to have in-person meetings without putting anyone's health at risk. So I ask everybody to work together with us. We have been one of the few municipalities I know in Macomb County and around the state that's been able to safely have these in-person meetings. I think it's been a very big benefit to our residents, to the public, to the business community, and to everyone, including me and the city council. So in order to continue to be able to provide in-person meetings, we're going to have to all work together on keeping everyone safe. So I appreciate your work and help on that. So with that, we'll move into our agenda tonight, and the next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I'd like to remind everyone that unfortunately, the annual Sterling Heights event, Sterling Fright event scheduled for October 24th had to be canceled because of the pandemic restrictions we live under. But we're very excited to announce two replacement programs that are really exciting. So the first event is Friday Night Sterling Heights. So this is a drive-in movie night featuring classic Halloween titles, which will take place on Saturday, October 24th, at Delia Park. Beetlejuice will begin playing at 6:45 PM, and then the Rocky Horror Picture Show will begin at 9:30 PM. The cost is $20 per vehicle, per show, and you can register online at myshpr.net/register, or you can register in person right here at the community center. So again, that's coming up this Saturday, the 24th. The second event is a family pumpkin carving event that will take place on Friday, October 30th, at the Farmers Market Pavilion, right in Dodge Park. Due to limited capacity and social distancing restrictions, the event will have three time slots, and they include 4:00 PM, 6:00 PM, and 8:00 PM, and the cost is $10 per person. So again, you can register at the community center in person, or by mail, fax, or email, but you do have to provide some sort of proof of residency, because again, it is a resident-only event. And also, related to this, from now until November 1st, there will be a straw maze in Dodge Park by the senior center. It's available now. This is a free park amenity, and you can continue to enjoy it during the Halloween season. And also, many of you have heard me talk about the Innovate Mound project. As you know, this has been a very involved effort that will involve the entire reconstruction of Mound Road from 696 to M-59. The roadway will be completely torn out, all the sidewalks, all the right-of-way. There'll be underground utilities put in its place, a new roadway system, a completely state-of-the-art roadway system, one of a kind in the Midwest and perhaps a country. This is a $200 million project that is starting next summer. So we want to make sure that everyone's well aware of all that's going on. There's been many public hearings so far, but there's a few more coming up, and that includes Tuesday, November 10th, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. These are Zoom meetings, by the way. You can go to the innovate mound.org site to get the Zoom contact information. Then there's another one, Thursday, November 12th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And if you can't make any of those, you can watch Innovate Mound. This is a future-driven, a half-hour television update running through November 15th on Sterling Heights TV, Monday through Friday at 6:00 PM. And you can also view that at the innovate mound.org site. So we encourage you to look for more information. Needless to say, this project encompassing at least two construction seasons will be quite disruptive, but when it's all said and done, we're all going to be very proud of it. I also wanted to highlight this evening a number of grants that have been distributed to the business community in Sterling Heights. Funding has been provided through three significant programs. One is the Michigan Small Business Relief Grant Program. Second is a Macomb County Small Business Sustainability Grant Program. And then the third is Michigan Restart Grant Program. The grants have ranged in amounts from $2,500 to $10,000 for qualifying businesses. And I'm pleased to say that, in total, over 700 businesses in Sterling Heights have received $3.7 million through these various grant programs. Now, I might also add that many businesses also receive funding under the Paycheck Protection Program, better known as PPP. And I wanted to take this moment to commend our partners at the county, who worked very hard and set up a highly automated and very efficient system to get these grants distributed to businesses that really desperately needed them throughout Sterling Heights and across the county. And while the funding has been vitally important to these businesses, there's still a need to assist businesses more. Many of you hear about restaurants that are struggling, other businesses that you attend or visit, they need more assistance. And this is an ongoing debate. Certainly, we'll learn more in the ensuing days or weeks, but certainly, we need our businesses to remain vibrant if we expect employment levels to return to pre-COVID levels. And I'm really excited to talk about this next item on my report, because it involves a recognition of a very important person that is with us this evening. The Home Builders Association of Southeastern Michigan recently selected Sterling Heights Building Official Michael Visenko as the 2020 recipient of their Distinguished Service in Government Award. In March and April of this year, the home building industry was shut down, as you all know, due to the state's stay-at-home, stay-safe orders. During this time, Mike became aware of a new home that was ready to close due to a sale, but was delayed when the final inspection could not be conducted due to the state's orders. In a joint effort with the Home Builders Association, Mike executed a thorough and calculated approach to safely and responsibly conduct the inspection necessary to ensure a temporary certificate of occupancy. And thus, the homeowners were able to close on the property. Mike's actions resulted in allowing final inspections on ready-to-close homes and certificates of occupancy to be issued not only in Sterling Heights, but actually across the entire region in the state. His leadership and example helped guide building departments statewide, even while new construction remained on hold. This was a great benefit to builders, obviously, who were trying desperately to save their businesses, as well as to families who were ready to move into their new homes. Mike embodies our city's culture of continuous improvement, innovation, and out-of-the-box thinking. This award is a testament to Mike's dedication of providing exceptional service to our community, and in this case, Southeastern Michigan as well. And I just want to say personally, Mike is a highly valued member of our leadership team in Sterling Heights. I have the privilege of working closely with him every day, and we really appreciate his good work. And I hope you'll all join me in a round of applause, recognizing Mike Visenko.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, members of council, Mr. Kraschewski. As some of you may know, I was born and raised in the construction industry and take my position as a city of Sterling Heights building official very seriously. In the construction industry, it takes many different disciplines to make a project come a success. During the pandemic, I had the ability to work with the Home Builders Association, Home Builders Association, and other communities throughout the state of Michigan. With the executive order changing almost daily, there were many families at risk of losing their interest rate because they couldn't close on their mortgages. Without a certificate of occupancy, closings can't happen. I was given a phone call from the Home Builders Association. I worked with them to establish some guidelines to get these inspections completed while keeping the safety of my staff as a priority. Once I had a legal response from the state of Michigan, I felt it was time to put my action into play, my plan into action. When I had our weekly Zoom meetings with my inspectors, I rolled out my program, and everybody agreed to do it with no hesitation. Also, during my weekly virtual meetings I had every Friday, it was with building officials throughout the state of Michigan, Ohio, as well as Illinois. I rolled out my plan and discussed it with them as well. This was accepted by many communities throughout the state, and closings were able to take place. One of the positive things that have come out of COVID 2020 is that it's made people think outside the box, and to become more efficient in coming up with more creative ways to get our jobs done. This is where I developed our virtual inspection program that we currently have in place, and also made other changes to our permitting system that gives residents of the city of Sterling Heights the ability to apply for residential building permits online without even coming to city hall. I once again want to thank all of you for your support in the past, and rest assured, I am constantly looking for ways to improve and excel the city of Sterling Heights Building Department to benefit the industry as well as the residents of Sterling Heights. Thank you. I would like to take one moment to introduce my wife, Tina. She has actually been a very strong supporter of me through the years, and especially 2020. It has been a little challenging at times, and getting a phone call from the Home Builders Association was quite a shock to me. Almost knocked me out of my deer hunting stand, but that's another story. My wife, Tina, she has been a very strong supporter of me and has helped me get through many things. So once again, I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike was going to invite his adult children, but he was concerned about heckling. So it's probably a good move. Thank you once again. I'm really pleased to talk about the next program as well, but instead of me doing it, I'm honored to introduce the police chief, Dale Dwojekowski, to talk about the city's core program.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, members of council. Lately, we've been talking about the core program quite a bit, and as members of council, you know, a lot of our complaints that come in get very difficult, especially when neighbors are concerned and residents are concerned, and especially if it's ongoing. The average road officer shows up, takes that run, and then he might not work for three more days, or he works midnights or afternoons when the complaint isn't happening. So this program, the core program, started, as you know, about three years ago, community outreach and resident engagement. And the idea was having more of a custom, coordinated police response to whatever quality of life issue you may have. And, Mark, we can progress the... A couple of things came out of the core program three years ago. We have seven specialty officer positions that do the core program. This is an additional job duty. These officers are regular police officers. There's no additional pay to do this. They volunteered to do this, and I don't know why they would volunteer, because it's nothing but headaches. It's problems, people that are not happy, repeat visits, but they do this, they step up, and they volunteer. So again, no additional pay. They want to do this. And we have one assigned, specially assigned neighborhood police officer for each of our six residential districts in the city, and a traffic corps officer. They handle complex complaints that require multiple visits and resources, participate in large community policing activities throughout the city, and residents have a personal connection to the police department. And a little bit about the, this, the core program started with more just community, big, large community events. What's happened in the last year is we've had a lot of complex complaints come in, whether it's to Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, or members of council. You guys get personal emails with problems, with issues, with stuff going on in neighborhoods. Those kind of issues and problems that aren't going to be solved with one police visit go to our core officers, and that's what they specialize in. And just this morning, to give you a little story, Officer Bezalow, one of our new core officers, we've had an ongoing issue between two neighbors and a loud pickup truck. We've been out there now five separate times, two of our core officers. The one pickup truck had a custom exhaust system on it. Our officer crawled underneath the car, pointed out that it was a custom exhaust that was putting out way too much sound. They ended up selling that truck because they knew it was not legal, got rid of that truck, and now they have a different truck, and that truck is putting out accelerated, loud exhaust. We're back out there again, working with both sets of homeowners, trying to find a compromise, because they have to live next door to each other. And these things get very, very touchy. This is not your typical road run. So our officer went out again for our sixth visit today. He wrote me a two-page report, and Sergeant Susala, who runs our core program, about the progress he made, who he talked to, and trying to get everyone to be as civil as possible so you can live next door to each other. That was just today. So this is what the core program has morphed into. It has morphed into these complicated residential problems that are going to take multiple visits, and our guys have been doing an excellent job at it. This is our core program. Sterling Heights is a six-mile-by-six-mile square. We have a core officer assigned to each area of the city. We have an Atom area, Baker area, Charlie, David, Edward, and Frank, and we have a traffic corps officer. And really simply, all you have to do is call 586-446-CORE, and it'll say, "Enter the area that your corps officer, where you live." And there is a map. If you looked on the screen on the web city's website, you can see Van Dyke running down the middle of the screen. And depending on where you live in the city, that is your corps officer. You call that number, and you can get ahold of them. A little bit about 2020, again, we've really ramped up the core program. We went from just a handful of specialty fund community events to now, look at what we did in 2020, 140 issues handled by our core officers. These were all complicated, ongoing issues. Other big, large community programs, like COCO with CORE, that's our officers ice skating out at our beautiful ice skating rink across the street, Crafting with CORE, Strengthen Your Core with CORE, that was working out with our police officers, another event we had. They're all certified child safety car seat installation experts. They can certify that your car seat is installed correctly right here at the station. They can call for an appointment. We can get that done for you. And again, solving those complex, ongoing quality of life issues, and COVID public safety responses during the, well, we're still in the pandemic, but the calls with masks and people not obliging by the governor's orders, our officers went out on those calls, explained the rules and what to do. Those were numerous, to say the least. This was a CORE event that we did, Crafting with CORE. We met this little guy named Zeke. We heard Zeke was going to have a birthday party. So officers chipped in. We bought a Ford Explorer, a remote-control electric car. The Department of Public Works mechanics put official police logos on it, put Zeke #1 on the door. It's a complete replica. It actually drives. It's electric, had flashing lights. We showed up. Some of the core officers showed up, and we ended up at his birthday party, gave him his truck, and this story made national news. It went to all 50 states around the entire country. And this was all started from a CORE event. Again, quick way to find out who your core officers, go to www.stirling-highs.net. When you go there, type in CORE, and you'll see the core program, and it'll talk about the core program. And actually, there's a highlight there in the middle of the core program. It says, "Interactive Map." When you click on the interactive map, you'll see a map of Sterling Heights pops up, and you can zoom into your address, literally click on your address, and it tells you if you live at 40370 Mount Vernon, my old home where I grew up. That is the Atom area, and that is Officer Frank Manning, and he is your corps officer with his phone number. So a great interactive map right on the website, or 586-446-CORE. And that is all I have for you. Thank you.
You can see the importance of community-oriented policing paying off right here in Sterling Heights. I wanted to thank the mayor and city council for their continued support of this program. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to adopt a resolution designating October 23rd, I'm sorry, designating October 23rd through 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Sterling Heights, supported the nation's oldest and largest drug abuse prevention campaign. We have a presentation from our police sergeant, Aaron Susala. We just heard so many great things about the core program from Chief Dwojekowski. Now, we get to hear from Aaron, and tell us about Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. I am Sergeant Aaron Susala from the Community Services Bureau, and I'm also the president of the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. And tonight, I'm here to speak on National Red Ribbon Week. The murder of DEA agent Kiki Camarena in 1985 is the catalyst which started creating the National Red Ribbon Week. The purpose of this week is to raise awareness on the destruction that drugs cause in America. Our wonderful community of Sterling Heights bands together and allocates resources on a daily basis towards education, enforcement, and treatment to combat the destruction drugs cause. The plans we have in place attack these issues from all angles. We have already implemented a plethora of programs and resources to the education, to the enforcement, and to the addiction treatment for opioid and alcohol within the community. We have now set our sights on the destruction of vape, and we want to provide these same resources towards combating vape in our community. With the acceptance of the proposed National Red Ribbon Week, we will be able to further our awareness on vape and help rid this harmful drug from our community. This video, produced by Bob Surgat from SHTV, will help further explain this movement from our community, and how recognizing Red Ribbon Week will help Sterling Heights remain the safest big city in Michigan for years to come. Please roll the video. Thank you.
Want to have some fun with these?
What's the bat?
Yeah, what's the bat?
Just some pills for my parents' bags and cabinet.
Oh, maybe. I'm not so sure.
Look, baby, it's a good one.
Jason and the Quick Response Team, and, you know, for Sterling Heights, they had intervened, and, you know, they had to push me and my wife, because my wife as well was addicted at the time. And, you know, it took them a couple of days, but they came in, they intervened, they talked to my mom, they talked to my son, they talked to me, my wife. They basically, you know, got together and helped us. To me, it just makes perfect sense, that you're dealing with people in a compassionate way. You're dealing with people who are struggling, so people who, for whatever reason, need help. And they found themselves addicted to drugs. They right on the cusp of dying. And instead of locking them up and treating them, you know, the old way, treat people like animals, and lock them up in cages, and then say, you know, "Get better," that's not going to work anymore. We know it's not going to work. Lives are at stake. Families are at stake here. These are good people, part of our community, that we are going to do everything we can to help them.
Hi, my name is Chief Dale Dwojekowski. I very proudly support and care of Southeast Michigan's Red Ribbon Week, which is the largest national drug prevention program throughout the United States. The Australian Police Department and all our officers proudly support this cause. cause and I proudly wear my red ribbon and we encourage you to do the same thing. Thank you.
So that video depicts some of the programs and events that we have already implemented for the destruction of drugs and would like to continue to implement creative and innovative ways to help red vape from our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Aaron. And, uh, I want to, on behalf of the city council, thank you for the work that you do. And I see Mario and Dana, everybody and part of our Drug Free Coalition is just, and Judge Davis is here. Thank you for everything that you guys do to help our community. I'm going to just, I'm not going to read this entire resolution because a lot of it's already been said, but we are recognizing October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week and we encourage anyone in the city of Sterling Heights, wear a red ribbon. People will ask you what it means and it opens up that conversation so you can have the dialogue. It's an annual, week-long initiative across the United States dedicated to the prevention of drug, tobacco, and alcohol abuse. Began as a grassroots tribute to a slain special agent Enrique Camarena, which we had a presentation about, I think it was last year, wasn't that right, um, Aaron? Um, he was killed, he was a US special, US Drug Enforcement Agent. He was, Special Agent Camarena was killed as retribution for his undercover work. So red ribbons are worn during this week and they've been symbolic, a symbolic statement for the prevention, awareness, and a visual commitment to a drug-free lifestyle. Promotes a discussion and helps us provide basic information on the range of support services and groups. And we endeavor to do our part in the city of Sterling Heights to foster that discussion, raise awareness of drug, tobacco, and alcohol abuse, to advocate for increased resources to address this crisis. And so I want to thank you again, Aaron, and the police department. When Fan came to us a year or so ago and talked to us about the, uh, Quick Response Team, which we saw somebody who, he and his wife are both beneficiaries of this Quick Response Team. You know, we hear a lot about reforming the police departments across the country and that police need to do things differently. Well, I'm proud to say that we, when our police department was asked, long before any of this started, it was ready to do whatever it could. Under Chief Dwojakowski's leadership, under, you know, Mario, you were in that meeting, I'm sure with us, you were there and, and the, the response to Linda Davis and Fan was whatever we can do to help, we will do it. Some other police departments were hesitant to engage in something like our Quick Response Team where we actually go out with a police officer. We go out with a, a peer recovery coach, somebody who's recovering, a recovering addict and, and a nurse, a social worker, somebody to help. And we've been able to get people off of drugs, get into rehab rather than locking them up. So the program's already working. Thank you for it. Um, and, uh, a lot of good news tonight and this certainly is one of the programs that I know my colleagues on the city council are, are most proud of. So keep up the good work and we'll proudly wear our red, red ribbons that we have here. So thank you, Sergeant Susala. Um, we do have a suggested action, council?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolved to adopt the resolution designating October 23rd through October 31st, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Sterling Heights in support the nation's oldest and largest drug abuse prevention campaign.
Support.
So we moved in supported, any discussion?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, I have to say that, um, I was participating in a workshop through the Michigan Municipal League Conference this past, uh, few weeks ago. And one of the workshops had to do with the opioid crisis in every community throughout Michigan in the United States. And, um, there was a mayor who is actually a recovering addict, uh, that was running the workshop. And I, um, put forth what we do here in Sterling Heights. And he says, you know what, I think I'm going to steal that idea. So I think we are leading the pack in this and I'm very proud to say that we're leading the pack in this and all the work that all of you folks put into it for the benefit of our residents, I can't say enough. Um, in addition to that, I will let you know that even though school is virtual, I know Warren Consolidated Schools is still participating in Red Ribbon Week. So, um, they are still going to have some activities for the kids, even though they are at home. Um, this is not a forgotten campaign, even though schools are virtual. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Council, anyone else? Mrs. Arkham?
Mayor Taylor? Thank you. Um, I just want to say that I'm grateful that all of the staff in the police department are willing to go, um, and try new programs that are going to make us a better community by making people better people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Next item on our agenda is another presentation and this is to acknowledge and thank Families Against Narcotics for the donation of $4,500 to the Sterling Heights Police Department. We have a presentation from our police chief, again, Chief Dale Dwojakowski. Chief?
Mayor Taylor, members of council, we've talked about some of this, uh, but this is more specifically about our QRT program. When Judge Davis came forward, she said, hey, I have this idea, um, about going to people's homes and getting them help and treatment after an overdose. In Sterling Heights, we already participated with Hope Not Handcuffs. That's when someone is an addict, they're looking for help, they can come right to our police station lobby and get help and support. We were one of the first in the county to do that when that was considered unusual. Normally you lock up people that have drug issues, we were offering treatment. So we were one of the first in the county to do this. When Judge Davis approached us at the end of last year, in 2019, she said, I'm looking for a department to be a pilot project to do this, one-off. You'd be the first in the state, um, sending a police officer, a caseworker, and a nurse to homes of people that just overdosed within the last two or three days and knock on the door and get them into treatment ASAP. Don't let them sit at home, don't let there hap, have, there be another overdose, don't wait for them to walk into our lobby. And that was the birth of QRT. That was Judge Davis. Um, we gladly took on that responsibility here at Sterling Heights. We have seven officers trained to do that program and we are the first in the state. So I have a little bit of background about QRT. The Combat Quick Response Team began in February of 2020 when Families Against Narcotics partnered with Sterling Heights to come up with this pilot program to combat opiate, uh, addiction. Prior to starting this innovative program, the city of Sterling Heights was definitely experiencing the impact of the opiate epidemic to the point that over the last three years, the city of Sterling Heights averaged around 100 overdoses per year with approximately 10 to 20 deaths per year. Not only did the community experience loss of life, the opiate epidemic has caused an immense fiscal strain, totally in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We, as a city, knew we needed to target this very serious problem. In doing so, in 2018, the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition was created to provide education and resources to our community. In late 2019, along came Linda Davis and Fan with this innovative new program to proactively seek people with substance use disorders and get them help and resources. Although Sterling Heights Police Department was one of the first agencies to participate in Hope Not Handcuffs, this program has greater impact because we don't wait for someone to walk into the lobby. Upon the creation of the Quick Response Team from day one of implementing this pilot program, the team found immediate success in getting people much-needed help for their substance use disorder. Not only providing resources, but immediately getting people into treatment facilities to begin their road to recovery. The program objective is to make house calls within 72 hours of a citizen who survived a recent overdose. Furthermore, our objective is to actively reach out to people with substance use disorder and attempt to prevent the next overdose from occurring. Since taking this approach, we've had great success. We just started this in February, right before the pandemic started. Uh, we took some time off because of COVID because things were so crazy. But since February of this year, uh, we've visited 158 homes where overdoses occurred in Sterling Heights. We've provided families with 32 peer recovery coaches, 29 family recovery coaches, and have placed 26 individuals into treatment facilities, resulting in a 60% success rate and getting people some sort of help and resources toward their road to recovery. There is no doubt that as a result of this program, we have saved many lives in our community and beyond. The proven, the proven success of our Quick Response Team has resulted in nine other communities beginning their own Quick Response Teams mirrored off the program started right here in Sterling Heights. Once again, the city of Sterling Heights is leading the way in innovative, lifesaving programs in the state of Michigan. Now I'd like to make, uh, introduce the person that made this all possible, Judge Linda Davis.
Not that I think he's sick. Um, I, I just want to brag on your police department just a little bit. You are always the first department that jumps on with us to do any programming that we do. And I think that's really important when you look at what's going on in communities across our nation, uh, with police being the bad guys all the time. Um, I'm very fortunate that I work with groups of police officers all over the state of Michigan that are always willing to step up to the plate. But I will tell you that not only are they willing, they understand addiction and that is something that I find isn't the case across the state of Michigan. Um, I just was recently talking to some police officers about our program and they kept talking about the danger of it. And we've placed over 4,600 people into treatment through our Hope Not Handcuffed Program over the last, uh, three years and we have never had an incident of any violence. People with substance use problems are not violent, they're sick. Uh, and it's only when police officers like your chief and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't at least mention Mario in this speech because he has really taken this program and has run with it with the blessings of the chief. Um, he is like our number one megaphone across the state of Michigan promoting this program to the point where we don't have enough funding to do it across the state. We have a waiting list now for people to do what you've been doing for a year, uh, in Sterling Heights. This is really important because we're all sitting here wearing masks because of safety for a pandemic, um, called COVID. Uh, and we did remarkable things in one year. We opened up hospitals, we built respirators, we did all kinds of things around the disease of COVID and yet we tailed behind so far on what we do with substance use disorder. I always say that my job will be done when we put as many resources and care into saving the lives of people that are suffering from substance use disorder as we do for COVID. Uh, losing a family member to addiction hurts every bit as much as it does to losing a family member to COVID. Uh, this is not a choice, it is not a moral failing, it is a disease. And it's really important when our police officers lead the charge and they are willing to recognize this is a disease and not a moral failing, we begin to change attitudes. And it's by changing one attitude at a time that I hope will open the doors for us treating this disease with the same concern that we treat any disease where death is the end result. Um, I cannot tell you how it breaks my heart every time that I have to go to a funeral. COVID was a reactionary thing and we did a lot of things. The numbers I'm interested in is how many people did we lose to overdose deaths because we isolated them and kept them from the set, the very treatment that would keep them in recovery. How many over, how many deaths have we had to depression and suicide because we isolated a very vulnerable population? We need to make decisions that keep all people equally at low risk of death. Closing treatment facilities is an abomination when we know that we turn people out that are in the midst of early recovery, that they are very likely to relapse and die as a result of those actions. So I can't tell you how appreciative I am for police departments like the Sterling Heights Police and all of you who made this program a possible. When we met with your city attorney and your city manager and the mayor, um, and many of you showed up at the opening, um, when we did the opening ceremony for, uh, this program, it just shows the community that you care about people in your community that are dying from this disease and that you want to have a system of care that puts them at the top of your list of what you think is important in the city of Sterling Heights. It's unheard of for 501(c)(3)'s to give money away. We really felt that it was important to, oh, and I have it upside down, uh, that we really wanted to, um, reward police departments for what they were doing. Uh, we know that this money will go right back into the system that will provide care to those individuals that are suffering from SUD. We wanted to make a gift to the city of Sterling Heights for allowing us to bring this, uh, program here in the amount of $4,500. We appreciate you. We think the world of what you're doing here around substance use disorder. I never call your mayor or your chief that they do not greet us with open arms. And I always also want to thank CARE for their support in this program. Dunya was instrumental in helping us, uh, train your police officers and it's through that team approach that we can really change the face of addiction and provide so many needed services. Thank you so much.
Well, we want to thank you. Uh, we can't say enough about the work that Fan's been doing. So, uh, before I get into my remarks, we do have a suggested action here. Counsel, I'd like to make that resolution.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
Resolved to acknowledge and thank Families Against Narcotics, otherwise known as FAN, for the donation of $4,500 to the Sterling Heights Police Department for the Comeback Quick Response Team.
Support. It's removed and supported, any discussion, Ms. Sarowski?
Um, yes, I do have a couple of things. Um, Judge Davis, don't go anywhere. Um, you might as well just stay right there. Um, I have to say, yes, I agree with Judge Davis. I've known her for many, many years, long before I was on council, long before she was even a judge. And, um, we are blessed and we are lucky to have great police department, great officers that took this upon themselves, Mario Bastinelli, um, Mr. Chief Dwojakowski. But we are most lucky that we have you. You have been an untiring, unbelievably strong, non-stop bit of a bulldog to get this through. And it is only with you, through you and your vision and your genius and how we can go about these things that has saved thousands and thousands and thousands of lives. I'm a nurse, I can never say I've saved that many people. You have done remarkable things and I am so honored and so grateful for you. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. And I just would be remiss if I didn't say, I, I get lots of accolades for what Fan has accomplished, but I work with probably one of the most amazing teams of people that I've ever had the opportunity to work with. They all put as many hours, if not more, into this program than I do. Um, and it is all about community and working together. Um, I would not be near as successful as I, if I did not have partners like Sterling Heights Police Department and all of my team members that put as much thought and passion into this as I do. But thank you so much. I will pass that sentiment on to all of them.
Thank you.
Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to second all of, uh, Mrs. Sarowski's comments and also state, is these innovative programs that make the Sterling Heights Police Department second to none in the state. I mean, we really are leading the way, especially when we get called. I know that, that, uh, Councilman Schmidt, that woman Schmidt, excuse me, said that she'd heard this, but I've heard from other organizations too, asking about our programs, how they can get out in the community. And I, it's my sincere hope that this goes statewide because it's a wonderful program and I just want to thank you all for putting it on. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Sar, uh, Mrs. Arkham?
Aye. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Taylor. Well, first of all, um, you brought up a good point when you were saying it's very unusual for a nonprofit to give money away. So I appreciate that. But I also know that nonprofits right now are coming up with different ways to raise money for those organizations. And I'm sure that you, as well as, um, let me see, somebody's here from CARE, Dunya? Dunya? Could you give us some information on some upcoming fundraisers that you're having so that we can let, um, our residents know that they have a chance to participate in the good programs that you've been able to initiate for all of us?
Yeah, we have, um, a campaign that's going on right now called, uh, One Million Reasons for Hope. Uh, and you can give as little as a dollar because those dollars really add up and we know not everybody can, uh, go to a fundraiser that it costs a hundred dollars. So we're hoping a lot of little donations will build into some big. Um, don't, don't think you have to limit yourself to a dollar, you are more than, you can give more than that. Uh, we just did our big virtual fundraiser, but we have a donate button on familiesagainstnarcotics.org that you can donate anytime. All of that money goes right back into programming. Only 10% of what we raise goes to administrative costs. Uh, we have 22 people that run an entire statewide program, um, and we work with over a hundred police departments. So, uh, you are free to donate at any time during the year and fortunately, people do. Um, so we are very blessed that we have been able to keep our heads above water during this very crucial time when fundraising has been, uh, very difficult for all organizations that depend on fundraising dollars to operate. Uh, and we're also really fortunate that we have received a lot of grants this year that have helped us keep ourselves above water. Um, but we don't know how long this is going to be going on, so- So please, if you feel inclined to help an individual, it only takes $125 to sponsor someone in a sober living environment for a week. And those first couple of weeks of coming out of treatment are very crucial. That's the part of our program that we have really had to scale back. But when somebody has to go back to a toxic environment to live right after coming out of treatment, that's a recipe for disaster. So if we can get them in a sober living home where they are surrounded by like-minded people that are walking one day at a time and staying drug and alcohol free, that can really lay the foundation for them to have a bright future ahead of them. I want to tell you that those dollars are really important because substance use disorder is treatable. We've always acted like it's not. It is a treatable disease, just like cancer. And if we can keep someone substance-free for five years, they have the exact same statistics of not going back using drugs as someone with cancer has if they stay cancer-free for five years. So we need to realize that this is a disease, we need to start funding it like it's a disease. So please give and give generously. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else? Well, I sort of said everything about FAN that I wanted to say, a fantastic organization, just doing incredible work here and sort of similar. You know, I'm glad you brought up the comparison to COVID because what happened with COVID was it would quickly spread, especially in Michigan. And, you know, everybody sort of got to know somebody who had the disease or was infected or, you know, through maybe one, maybe not your brother, your sister, your husband, your wife, but somebody close to you. And this opioid epidemic years ago, four, five, six years ago, and I remember talking to friends and family members that were like, no, this is, those are junkies, you know, they get what they deserve. And then slowly, it started affecting and impacting somebody. And it's hard to call your own brother or your own, you know, son or your own daughter a junkie. So you've been doing incredible work to get people to face that because it's a hard thing to sell somebody who hasn't gone through that experience. But we need to get people educated on it. We can't wait until they've had a loved one die. And you've done incredible work. So thank you for what you're doing and you're helping our community in a way that's really impactful. So we appreciate your support and we'll do anything we can to continue to further your mission. So Counsel, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again, good luck. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances to create the Community Alliance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
Resolved to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances to create the Community Alliance.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I think we've discussed this quite a bit, but the fact of the matter is, we, like a lot of other communities, really need to be forward-looking. We are extremely, excuse me, we are an extremely diverse community and we are an extremely welcoming community. And we need to show that in action, not just in words. And I think that the Alliance and the people involved in this are going to give us some great direction on how we can move our city forward and how everyone can have that Sterling Heights experience and feel welcomed in the community, even in a community where they've lived for 10, 20, 30 years and some of them still don't feel welcome. And I think we can bridge some of those gaps with this. So I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to this going into fruition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yenness. Is it Mrs. Sarowski?
I actually do not have anything else to say. Mr. Yenness said it perfectly, so I'm happy to let him lead that charge.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote in favor of the Community Alliance, but I still don't think it's enough. I think it's a watered-down version of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission that we should have, and I think the people at home know that. So I hope in the future we can improve this committee. The people at home are watching, they know that we can do better. And I, this will be a good start, I guess, but it's still not enough and I still hope for improvements. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Well, I said everything I wanted to say last week or two weeks ago. I'm in support of this and I'm happy to see it coming. So with that, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's Consent Agenda? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, also City Manager. What I want to talk about tonight is CARES Act money received by the city. When I saw Item I on the agenda, $723,591, 100% funded through the Macomb County CARES Grant. I recall possibly three meetings ago that we spent $447,000 for, I believe it was networking software for the city. I also noticed that down on Item K, we're approving a coronavirus relief funds subrecipient agreement between the County of Macomb and the City of Sterling Heights to facilitate allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security CARES Act funding. Total allocation was $1,570,835. Now, earlier, I understand Mr. Vanderpoel to say that we received $3.7 million and I need to know if that was CARES Act. He said there were three separate grants. And what the total amount of CARES Act funding the city has received because of coronavirus? I would sure appreciate those answers. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the Consent Agenda? If not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the Consent Agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration item, and this is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, Counsel, this is, I should say, these are two boards, Board of Ordinances Appeals Two Alternates and Zoning Board of Appeals Alternates. There's two open positions on the Board of Ordinances Appeals Two Alternates. This is a City Council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2023. Does anyone have any nominations for this board? What about Zoning Board of Appeals Alternates? Any nominations for that? Let's push it out. I think the next meeting is going to be Wednesday after the election, so why don't we push this to, why don't we push this to Tuesday, November 17? I'd entertain a motion to postpone these appointments to the Tuesday, November 17, 2020 City Council meeting.
Still moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration item, what is it, 9B, to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Counsel, this is the second step of the two-step process for two nominees. The first, the Board of Ordinances Appeals One Alternate, Elizabeth Vincent, term ending June 30, 2023, who'd like to make that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Elizabeth Vincent to the Board of Ordinances Appeals as an alternate to a term ending June 30, 2023, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone at home, Liz is an attorney. She worked as a prosecutor from the City of Macomb Township or Macomb Township. She's very interested in keeping our property standards high. I think she'll do a wonderful job at this position.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, Counsel? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordinances Appeals Two. This is an appointment of Lauren Tackett. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Lauren Tackett to the Board of Ordinances Appeals Two to a term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, I think, I know her, she's one of my neighbors, she has been involved with real estate in the past, and so I think she's a good addition to that board.
Very well. Anyone else, Counsel? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Jefferson.
First, this goes out to Mr. Vanderpoel, who controls our deer population here in Sterling Heights. Some areas of the city is a pretty large population of deer roaming around. Even though they might be cute and everything, they're also dangerous, very dangerous, especially when they cross the street. Also, ordinance, the house lights, some neighborhood that I've noticed, some of the house lights at night, they could light up Comerica Park. I was wondering if there was an ordinance for that? Or what could be done about that because it may be disturbing to the neighbors. We've seen, as the chief said, that people might get called five or six times out to a promenade. We could fix beforehand. Mayor Taylor, where you, oh, there you go, is your wife and her group, are they having a Christmas wrapping paper deal again this year? Because if they are, could it be put on the website or something in case people want to donate used, not used, but leftover wrapping paper from last year or donate wrapping paper to them or their organization? Because this year I got a great feeling, there's going to be a lot of people in need. I think we should already have a box down here or a Christmas toy drive, just because, like I said, this year people are going to be hurting and they're going to be really That all being said, at the last meeting, Mayor Taylor, you went on a small soliloquy about diversity and how people, this city council, the community, the county commission, they wasn't as diverse as people say. But under your watch, there's been three times you had a chance to make that, to change the way the city council looks, and you failed to do it. You could have did it with Liz Sarowski, you could have did it with Mike Rackey, you could have did it with Henry Yenness. When Mike Rackey was up there in his position, before his position, we're talking about Gary Luss, there was a young Middle Eastern guy came up looking for that position. Somehow your friend Gary Luss got the position. Ms. Sarowski's position, there was a young Indian lady came up here, she didn't get the position. I don't know. For Yenness, when it was his position, it was Shannon, but in that same time, there was a young African-American lady who could have got the position too. But that went out the window, as we know. And let's not forget, Ms. Early was in here, Polish fellow by Joe Jugnick could have got the position. So tonight, I'm going to ask you again, just like I did at last meeting, if you can't denounce the discrimination that Mike Rackey put up over the past few meetings with his constant phrase, using people as bigots, or saying that he wouldn't give stuff to white men, then you know better than Donald Trump. So tonight, we need you to denounce that discrimination. Thank you.
Anyone else under communications from citizens? Up, sir.
First, I'd like to tell an update, thank you from the city that I was able to get in touch with CARES Act. And I submitted the program into Macomb County and I was able to get in with it one hour. I'll find out within 30 days if the VFW American Legion does get some money. I also would like to thank Councilman Henry, Councilwoman Barbara and Councilwoman Maria for the generous donations that they have gone so far. I was just informed that one of our veterans is in a substance use program and I don't know where the money is going to come from, but I would like to make an appeal on this right now. I need some money so I could help her. The background that all I know is, she was in a bad auto accident, so she probably got hooked on painkillers, is my guess. I'm so tired of hearing that. Also, what I did is I'm working with Senator McDonald concerning the Texas Hold'em, where 80% of our income has stopped right now. So if anybody would like to be a part of a meeting that's going to happen sometime next week, get in touch with City Manager Mark Vanderpoel, he has my number and he can touch with me concerning if he wanted to join that meeting sometime next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bealan. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Matthews, is it?
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor, Clerk Riska, Manager Vanderpoel and Attorney Kaschubski. It's been a strange couple of weeks for me. As a teacher, I've gone back to school recently and many of you either have kids of your own or know people who have kids, and it's been a very wild ride for all of us. It looks very different than we thought it would one year ago. If you told me a year ago it looked like it does today, I would say you were crazy, but here we are. Some of us are virtual, some of us are going back to in-seat. I just welcomed my freshmen back this week. Not as many as I had hoped, but they got my bad jokes all the same. I was trying to give them some normalcy and, you know, stability and role modeling. We care for them as we always do, even in these changing and difficult times. And that's something I want to talk about tonight, is providing that sense of normalcy and that role modeling for people, even in the chaos that we have to deal with every day. With technology, with the changing schedules, I think I'm on my 13th work calendar so far this year, and I don't think we've had that many weeks, so it's been very exciting. And there's a lot of things I think that people can do, like I try to do with my students as a teacher, that cities can also do as well for their citizens. One of the first things, and one of the most basic things that the cities can do, is simply to have services continue. Things like this meeting give people a sense of peace. I know they're not the most widely publicized things in the sense that everybody's tuning in right now to watch it live. However, like you had pointed out earlier, Mayor, not everybody is doing this. A lot of people are doing these virtually still. So the fact that we're doing these in person and the fact that we're doing them safely with the appropriate distancing and safety procedures with masks and sanitation, that's a very good role modeling technique. Because as we get into winter, the projections are that things are going to get more dangerous, unfortunately, with regards to this virus and compounding on top of flu season, the normal winter problems that we have with that. The services that we've continued to see in the city have been also a very nice thing that help give people a sense of peace. I know when I go for walks in the park, it lets me forget about things for a little while and I get to see the animals. while, and I get to see the animals there. And, you know, they had the path just got paved this year, again, in James Nelson Park, and it was wonderful. And I could forget about, you know, everything that I saw on the news, or what the, you know, virus toll was for that day. And that provides some sense of peace for people as well. So even those things that don't seem like they're extraordinary are extraordinary in the sense that they are ordinary. They provide people that sense of normalcy that they need. We have a very important event coming up in the next couple of weeks, and as I'm sure you are all very happy to hear it will be over soon, the election is coming up. Now, the sense of normalcy that people have may not be the same that they're used to. They want to vote, but voting might look different for them. So I'm also happy to see that Sterling Heights has been an excellent role model in how people get to cast their votes. Earlier, a couple of weeks ago, I want to say about two weeks ago, I went and cast my ballot at one of the many drop boxes that we have around the city. It was very easy to do. I would encourage people to go out and vote. They don't have to wait to the day of the election, but they can use one of those many drop boxes around, and it was very convenient for me. I didn't have to drive to the other corner of town. I could find the one, super easy, that was close to me. Some of you, I know, have been on social media, providing that bit of visibility to help people, encourage them to vote in that manner, and I think that really provides some sense of structure and positivity for people. As we go forward here, I really hope that we can have that world-class role modeling that we've really seen here. I know we have a world-class counsel and clerk and manager and everything else, so I hope that that provides people some sense of peace in these trying times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, greetings. I just want to say, because of the Community Alliance, I am in great support of it. Therefore, because of the, some people may agree, may disagree, but I strongly agree with it, and just want to let you know, I'm in strong support of it. As you all know, Sterling Heights is probably one of the most diverse cities, and I can say, all of America. A lot of people came to this city, nothing. Now you see them opening up a business of their own, you know, establishing, you know, great finances for their family, and just being in this great city that they call home. My parents were one of them. They came to this city, I mean, they came to this country with nothing. I just want to say that, Mr. Mayor, if you need anyone to help you with this kind of program, please let me know, reach out to me. I feel that, you know, as much diverse as we are, we have such a big Chaldean population. I myself am Chaldean. This is, this city is the largest Chaldean population outside of the Middle East. Probably, I think we're about 50,000 Chaldeans. And I can say, each Chaldean loves this city, but the only thing, the only problem is, is that they're not educated. I want to educate them to know who you all are, what you guys do, how great, you know, everything we do in this city, this building, you know, what you guys offer. I just feel that it's just beautiful. And I myself am a bring, you know, can bring a big asset to this, you know, program, just basically teaching, you know, all my community, my community especially, as well as other communities, what we can do, and how can we move forward, and how we can educate everyone, you know, to know what's going on in this city. Because whether we do good, no one knows, you know, no one in the community knows what good we do, but they will only know what things we do bad. But let's change it, let's educate them. You're going to probably see me on social media soon, you know, educating my community, educating everyone else, especially the youth, to know what we do good, and especially with everything we have mentioned. Let's, let's move forward, and let's, let's start now. We don't want to start in the future, let's just start now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion. We'll go on to reports from City Administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything tonight?
Mayor, I can briefly respond to a couple of questions. First, there was a question about the amount of CARES Act funding that the city has received. First, let me make the distinction between CARES Act funding that the county distributed to businesses when I spoke earlier in my city manager's report. I mentioned that businesses in Sterling Heights received $3.7 million in various grants. That all came from CARES Act funding that went to the county, and then the county in turn, through the grant programs, distributed that funding to businesses across the county, including in Sterling Heights. Now, in terms of the funding that we have received directly from the county as a municipality to use for CARES Act is approximately just over $1.5 million. Approximately 700,000 of that is going to fund automated door systems throughout all of our public facilities, and that would include, obviously, City Hall, the Police Department, Public Library, the Court Building, and our recreational facilities as well. We have tens of thousands of people that come through our facilities in any given year. This year, it's COVID-19. We don't know what pandemics look around the corner, hopefully no more, but we also have serious strains of influenza and the like, so we want to make sure that our facilities are as safe as possible. So the major doorway systems in the facilities will be completely automated through this funding. In addition, we did provide our employees laptop computers so that they can carry on city business at home. We have to rotate employees into our city facilities weekly. In other words, we can't have our entire workforce in our facilities because of the restrictions we, we live under now, and we certainly want to have our buildings open to the public. So one week, we have a Group A in, one week we have, the next week, we have Group B in, and Group A works from home. And in order for them to work from home and get all their work done, they have to have adequate equipment to do so. So CARES Act funding has helped us to enable the community's local government to remain open during this crisis. In addition, the city has received approximately $3.5 million in CARES Act funding passed down from the state. And that funding has been used to fund police and fire operations during the COVID crisis, in addition to filling some revenue losses from the state. That all sounds like a lot of money, and it is. The concern moving forward, however, is that there's millions of dollars at risk for the city in potential loss revenue over the next year, mainly in the form of state shared revenue sharing that we receive. So by no means is the city out of the woods with the CARES Act funding we have received. In fact, it really, it helps, but, but the need will be great over the next couple of years, for sure. Thank you. And, and I think there was one other question. The deer population. Some communities, like Ann Arbor, periodically get into deer culling through the DNR permitting process. We have not done that. Very few communities do that in southeastern Michigan. In Sterling Heights, this is obviously the time for that deer are more prevalent, so we do encourage residents to be on guard, especially along the ITC corridor and other wooded areas. But certainly, we have some public information on our website, and that's all I have for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Koschubski, anything?
Nothing. All right, Mayor, thank you.
Counsel, any reports, your business? Mrs. Zarco.
I don't have any reports, but I can respond to a couple of things that were mentioned today. And Mr. Jefferson brought up friends of foster kids and wrapping paper. I was probably a month ago, and they're going through a whole different process this year because of COVID. And one of the reasons is, is they can't have as many people in the building to do all the wrapping. So I, their children will still, they'll be asking for donations, you can still adopt a child and buy whatever is on their wish list, but you won't see them wrapping everything individually like you did before. They'll be, they are coming up with their process, you know, to do this safely. So that's where they're at now, and I'll let you know more in a couple of weeks. The other thing is, is Mr. Matthews brought up normalcy, and I was glad to see him tonight as an educator, and, you know, to share his thoughts. And a few weeks ago, I was with three teachers, and they were all in different school districts. And as I was listening to their conversation, they were saying that they felt that they were going to be better and smarter teachers because of all of the changes that they've had to, you know, to make in order to educate our children. So I thought that was, they were focusing on the positive, just like you were, you know, focusing on the positive. So I give you all a lot of credit for that, and it's, it's nice to hear positive things and how things are going to be better because of the changes we've had to make. And then lastly, Mrs. Ryska. You know, when you listen to the news sometimes, I mean, I really do watch the Hallmark Channel a lot because they don't have any, any news and, and no ads, so it's, it's a great escape or Netflix, but I'm, it's so, but the term naked ballots has come up, and that's when somebody doesn't use the security sleeve that they're supposed to put their absentee ballot in. What happens to ours if somebody doesn't use their security sleeve?
Ms. Ryska.
So in our absentee voter counting form, when we do open our absentee ballots, if a ballot is not inside a secrecy sleeve, we have a strict protocol to get that ballot into a secrecy sleeve before we continue processing. So that does not invalidate ballots. I know there's a lot of misinformation out there in the media, but not returning your ballot without a secrecy sleeve will not invalidate it.
And that was my question. Those ballots are still counted?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then, lastly, I just want to encourage everybody to vote between now and two weeks from now. We've tried to make voting in the city as safe and secure as possible, whether you be doing it with an absentee ballot or going to the polls, we will make sure that you stay safe and healthy. We're doing our part, so now do your part. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. As, as I think people know, I have a great passion about cleaning up trash. I, you know, I like the, the idea of keeping our city looking great, simply picking up after yourself, and, and, you know, trash is a never-ending, a never-ending story, and it's something that we continuously have to do. And I think people here know that I've been doing a river cleanup for, for many years now. And on occasion, I'll just go out on my own, and just for the heck of it, and clean up a roadside, just because it looks better. So having said that, Clinton River Watershed Council, who I do the cleanups through, have cleanups every week, and they have one coming up on Wednesday, October 28th, from 10 to 12. And it's a cleanup of Donovan Park here in Sterling Heights. So if anybody wants to participate and help clean up a little corner of Sterling Heights, you can find the information on their website, crwc.org. Again, that's Wednesday, October 28th, from 10 to 12, Donovan Park. And then, one of our big cleanup days, Shine Day, is November 7th, and that's at 9:30. And we're still having Shine Day, Mr. City Manager? Yes, sir. Which is a great event. So many people come out for that, and we get to clean up homes of people who are, don't necessarily have the capability of cleaning up themselves because of age or physical condition. So it's a great neighborly thing to do, and it really makes neighborhoods look, look great. I love Shine Day, I love participating in that, and I'd love to see everyone come out and join us with that. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, I want to point out, so I'm making notes, right? I was telling somebody the other day, you know, here in Sterling Heights, we don't let grass grow under our feet. We're always moving, we're always moving forward, doing something, we're a progressive community. And as the program was going on tonight, I was making notes, and, and then I thought, holy cow, this is a lot. And then I started making notes about some of the things that have happened over the last week. And so just tonight, right, we talked about the core program, the Red Ribbon Week, Hope Not Handcuffs. We recognize Mike Visankow and his innovation of doing inspection work during COVID. We talked about Come Back QRT, the Substance Use Disorder Program. And then also this week, we did, we had a Zoom program on Innovate Mound. We had a presentation on the Lakeside Mall redevelopment, and also the Van Dyke Avenue redevelopment. All tonight and within the last week. And what an, what an incredible story this is for our city. And, you know, sometimes, I probably, like everybody else, I tend to take us a little for granted sometimes, especially when I have to drive through the intersection of Plumbrook and Shana, Mr. City Manager? I'll say that again, but I, you know, you do, and, you know, those are just the departments we're talking about. We haven't talked about what Parks and Rec does. We haven't talked about what our city clerk and her staff is doing right now, doing backflips over an election, and they still have to do all the other work that the clerk has to do. Our, our, our city maintenance department, you know, Fire Department just had their, their open house. We do not let grass grow underneath our feet. This is really an incredible city. I love the fact that we do so much in such difficult times, such a difficult time. We are really continuing to move forward, that our citizens can come here. As you said, Mr. Mayor, we're one of the few cities, we can have a live meeting, people can come. They can come to the microphone, and they can say their piece, you know, they have their First Amendment rights. And if they don't like something that there's, you know, that we're doing, or whatever, they can say so. And they can maybe help us do a little course correction. And we really have to appreciate that. So I, I just want to say how much I appreciate this city. I appreciate everybody who works here. I appreciate all the taxpayers who, you know, who fund all this stuff, and I just, you know, maybe I'm being a bit of a homer, but I think we have a great city, and I just wanted to say so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Yanis. Mrs. Koschubski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After you're listening to Mr. Yanis, I think what we need is a list of all the activities for the day so that we can make sure that we stay on them, listen to them, hear them, are aware of them. Through the chair to Mrs. Sarowski. Can you give us an update on your wonderful programs that you have for the election? The election's going to be here in two weeks. We've got people dropping off their ballots into the drop boxes and taking selfies. Have you seen any of those? And can you let us know, once again, if they wish to track their ballot, how they can do that?
Mrs. Ryska. Yeah, and I did, Deanna, I did one, I got 30,000 likes on Twitter, my Rock the Box selfie.
Wow.
30,000 likes.
Yay.
You got like 5,000 retweets.
Hashtagged it Lincoln Project and stuff. I think it's a little...
How big is your family?
So are stars.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just bragging a little bit here, but it's my viral fame moment. I noticed the city didn't retweet it, but I probably, I can understand why. Ms. Ryska.
Thank you. Yeah, so our Rock the Box campaign, we've had a number of voters take selfies as they drop off their ballots at any one of our seven drop box locations. So if you have not yet returned your absentee ballot, and you plan on using the one of our seven drop boxes, which are located here at City Hall in the lobby, inside the lobby of our election center, which is located inside our senior center, or in, in front of the police station, which is a drive-up, and at fire stations two, three, four, and five, when you drop your ballot off, take a selfie, post it on social media at hashtag Rock the Box, and there will be a contest drawing for a gift card for the best picture, so to speak, and that's being run by the Community Relations Department.
Most retweets? Most likes?
No.
Well, that's going to be, that's going to be set by the, that'll be set by the, by the Community Relations Department, but I'm sure I'll, I'll let the Community Relations Director know that you have 30,000 likes on your, on your Rock the Box selfie.
Wait till we're all done, Mr. Taylor, they're not all up yet.
Jumped the gun a little bit.
I know, there's more of us out there with our little retweet, our little...
Sorry, Ms. Ryska.
Go ahead. Sorry, Ms. Ryska.
So, yeah, as you know, the election is two weeks out. It is not too late to register to vote or to apply for an absentee voter ballot. You can do that at our election center, located at our senior center, again, 40200 Utica Road. We do have extended hours now. We are open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, with extended hours on Tuesday and Thursday until 7:00 PM, and then also on Saturday from 10 to 2. On Halloween, on October 31st, we are actually open from 9 to 5. So we wanted to give residents the most opportunity to come in and take care of their election business, register to vote, and cast their absentee ballots. If you'd like me to talk about some of the numbers, I know that's, it's of interest right now. Our voter registration rules have skyrocketed. Just before I came to the meeting tonight, we have 98,004 registered voters. That is up just about, just about 10,000 registered voters from 10, or from... That is up just about, just about 10,000 registered voters from 10, or from four years ago in 2016. We've issued 37,913 absentee voter ballots. We already have 22,447 returned. That's about 59% of our absentee ballots have been returned. So, you know, and we still get hundreds of phone calls a day, we get hundreds of emails a day, people coming into the election center. So there is, there's such a great momentum in voter involvement. It's really exciting from an election administrator's standpoint to see, you know, all of the involvement that, that our voters are, you know, that they're participating in our democratic process.
Can you also add, if they choose to track their ballot?
Yes, absolutely. So voters can visit Michigan or MI.gov/vote, and you can enter your voter information. So your name, your address, your, and I believe it asks for your month and year of birth, and it will pull up your voter file. It will tell you not only where you go to vote, but it will also tell you when your ballot was, when the absentee voter ballot was mailed out, and when it was received. So for voters who decide to use one of our seven drop boxes, your ballot will be received, they are picked up daily, so they will be received and logged into our system within 36 hours of you dropping your ballot off. So again, that website is MI.gov/vote.
Anything else, Mrs. Kosky?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll just move, all right, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I can attest to how easy it is to go into the senior center to vote. My husband and I, yesterday, we did not have absentee ballots beforehand, decided that we would go in and cast our ballot early. So we walked in, there are ways to socially distance, one person taken at a time, excuse me, and it was a very quick process. Excuse me. So we went mid-afternoon, there were not a lot of people there. I'm not sure, they did say it was pretty busy throughout the day. And as far as tracking your ballot, I have, I won't tell you how old my mother is, but I have an elderly mother who's very agile, but received a postcard in the mail. She does not live in Sterling Heights. She received a postcard in the mail claiming it was from her city clerk stating that they had not received her absentee ballot yet, which she was very upset about because she had personally taken her absentee ballot to the Royal Oak City Clerk's office. So I did get onto the Michigan website, and I tracked her ballot, and sure enough, it had been received. So there are some people trying to put fear out there that even though you've put your ballot in, in one of those boxes, that it hasn't been received. If there is any doubt in your mind whatsoever, it's very easy to access that, that tracking system. And yes, you have to put your birth date and your address, and it was right there. So if there's any doubt at all, I encourage you, very simple process, just to track it for your peace of mind. And if there is an issue, call our city clerk's office. They are wonderful people and working very hard to make sure that we are doing things right in Sterling Heights, so. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one further question from Ms. Ryska through the chair. When you say the ballot is received, that means the signature matches and it's ready to go for processing on Election Day, correct?
Ms. Ryska.
Yes, that is correct. If we have received the ballot in the system, that means everything is good, it's squared away, we are going to count it on Election Day. If a voter returns their ballot and there happens to be some discrepancy or some issue with their ballot, we do contact them with a phone number that they provide, or if they don't provide a phone number, we send them an email. And also, if we can't get ahold of them that way, we send them a letter, and they have until 8:00 PM on Election Night to come in and resolve that issue. And we, that's something that we have always done, that's nothing new in our office.
I just know that people were asking questions about on, on Facebook and online, so I wanted to make sure we had that. Everyone at home, I urge you to get out and vote, get out and vote early. At this point, I, I would say the best thing is to rock the box and get it back into the Dropbox rather than going through the post office, but you can still mail your ballot, but we're kind of getting to the edge here where I'd say drive it up to City Hall and drop it in the box. I know that I did, did yesterday myself, and I, it was an easy process. I got to post a picture now, though, I guess. So I'll do that, but I urge everyone to get out and vote. Just from some figures I did yesterday, you know, I think we're going to have 460,000 voters in Macomb County this year, which would be a huge increase of all time. I know that we have something like 220,000, 216,000 ballots out, whoever returned already in Macomb County, which is just fascinating. It's going to be the highest ever turnout. So please have your voice heard. It's democracy, it means a lot to everyone here, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I will be brief because it is, it is at the end of the night. Again, I wanted to do a couple of just quick things. I wanted to thank Mr. Matthews for getting back into the classroom. It is, it is something that has been, it's, it's necessary for a lot of children to be back, but I also understand those that are staying home and socially distancing either by choice or by decree. And I do understand, thank God, I don't have small children anymore, because that would be a challenge. And I do commend all you parents and the educators for doing such a good job at trying to provide that normalcy. Normalcy is extremely important, as we know, and so that is awesome. I do also just very quickly say, please, everybody get out and vote. Nothing you haven't heard already, but it is so important. And it is amazing and wonderful and exciting and encouraging to see that 10,000 more registered voters in the city that has a pretty good registered voter count. So we are, we are doing wonderful things, and hopefully every, every person who ever has not voted will get out and make this your first time. Shouldn't be too many of you out there, the way we talk about it. So I encourage everyone to get out and vote, especially the young people. This is, might be your first time. Made it very easy, just walk it into City Council, City Hall, don't give it to me, don't give it to City Council, give it to City Hall, or give it to one of the, go to any of the drop boxes, as we've said before, in front of the police, or fire stations and police stations. So thank you, and thank you again, and good luck to all the candidates out there who are running, and we will see you back again the day after the election.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Ms. Ryska, so we've got 98,000 registered voters. Do you know, have we ever had that many registered voters? Is this the most the city's ever had, as, as far as you're aware?
Yes, it is.
What's, what are the numbers right now? Are people still registering to vote? Are they going to the election center to do it?
Yes, we register a number of people every single day at the election center, which now, today was the deadline that you have to come in person to the election center to vote or to register. You can do that all the way through Election Day, but we encourage all voters or all, you know, or residents to come in and register early.
Okay, so you can't register in any other method other than showing up in person? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. As of today, you have to register in person. If you register by mail, you would still have to come in and verify residency within these 14 days before the election.
Do you know how many people who are registering to vote at the election center are getting a ballot and voting right then and there?
I don't know for, for fact, but I do know just from experience and talking to my team, it's probably close to 100% of them.
Wow. So, so we've got 10,000 new voters since 2016, and you're saying that most of those folks are getting their ballot and voting at the same time? That's really interesting. There's 37,913 AV ballots out, and you said, I think, 22,400 or so have been returned. What is an average percentage at this time? We're two weeks out from the election. Do people generally get their ballots and turn them in right away? Or is there a big influx towards right around Election Day?
It's really dependent on the election, this type of election. You know, I wish people would return them as early as possible, but I think we're kind of on average about now, you know, you know, the two weeks out on, on how many we've received so far. You know, it's really just, it's, it's trying to encourage people to return them early, the earlier the better. So if we can get voters to turn them in early, that would be great.
I was walking up to City Hall yesterday, and somebody was struggling with the box, which was a different story. She just couldn't figure out how to get the, the ballot in. It's actually quite easy. She just was a little bit confused. I helped her out, but what she was holding was an envelope. And I said, you know, this is the ballot drop box. And she said, I talked to somebody in the office who said, I can drop my voter registration, or my, not, I'm sorry, my application for a ballot in here. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Those boxes are for any election business. So if people want to return their absentee voter ballot application, they can do that.
Okay. That's good to know. I think my last question is, we've had some discussion about this over the past meeting or two at least. How are you doing in terms of recruiting election workers? Do you need more election workers? Where are you in that process?
We do. We still need probably close to 50 election workers. We've had a really great response just from online, and obviously, you know, council approved the pay increase at the last meeting, which was a big help. But I think we're about, I, I think it was like 370 people so far that we have, so we probably need another 50 or so people. So I encourage people to, you know, if you want to help out and, and, you know, kind of exercise your civic duty, so to speak, complete an election inspector application, which can be found on our website at Sterling-Heights.net, and return that to vote@Sterling-Heights.net.
All right. Thank you very much. As some of the other council members have said, I've done my voting already. I got an absentee ballot, was able to fill it out, dropped it off at the box in front of the police office on Sunday, I think that would have been Sunday, the 18th, and it was logged in on the state's website on, as received on Monday, the 19th. So it's very quick and easy to track, and gives you a lot of security and good feeling that the city's got it, and you don't have to worry about that. So we, of course, encourage everybody to get out and vote. It's, it's obviously been on the front and center of everyone's minds for a long time now, an important election. And I do want to just say, you know, on behalf, I've talked with our col, my colleagues on the city council, we are incredibly proud of our city clerk and the work she does, and the hundreds of, you know, people who are helping her out, and not to mention her professional staff that is working under incredible circumstances right now. I mean, the, the eyes of the entire world are on people like Melanie. And it's not, and I'll tell you, I've spoken with a Norwegian newspaper, a Dutch newspaper, a Finnish newspaper, a British newspaper, and there's one other I'm missing. And I spoke with the Japanese general counsel from Detroit, who is very interested in what's happening in Macomb County, because he needs to report back to his, he's a diplomat here, he needs to report back to the State Department in Tokyo to tell them what's going on in Macomb County. And what happens in Sterling Heights is going to be what happens in Macomb County, to a large degree. And so it's not an overstatement to say that literally the eyes of the world are on Michigan and places like Sterling Heights. That's a stressful, difficult circumstance for anybody to be in, and we are really, really lucky to have Melanie, because we have seen the results in the past. They work hard, they're diligent, they're professional, they get the job done. So kudos to you. You've got a tough two weeks ahead of you, and I know you've got one long night at the end of that, but we'll all be watching, and we wish you well, and if there's anything we can do to help, let us know. Thank you all for participating in this meeting tonight.
Mayor Taylor, can I just ask Ms. Ryska one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you finding there are more ballots returned in the boxes or by mail?
Yeah. By far, people are using the boxes. The Dropbox in front of the police station, 50% of our ballots have been returned in that Dropbox alone. Only 16% of our ballots have been, have been sent back via the United States Post Office. You know, so, yeah, by far, I don't have the total numbers, 50, 60, 70, probably, you know, I don't know, 80%, 74% have been used the Dropbox.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Zarco.
And I do have a question on the numbers. Okay, if we have 98,000 people, you know, roughly, that are registered, we have approx, we have 37,000 absentee ballots out there with only 59% that have been returned, do you see, do we have enough work, or help? I mean, you're saying that we need more workers. I'm concerned we are going to have lines. When you look and you start doing the math here, we know 100% isn't going to show up. We would love that, for sure, but I just wonder, you know, when you think about, there's almost 60,000 people that could be voting that day. So I guess, through the chair, are we prepared?
I love that question. That's an amazing question.
Yeah.
We have been working, so, yeah, if, if we, so we have about 60,000 people, let's just, let's just kind of talk just round numbers. If we have a potential of having 60,000 people at the polls, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I doubt we're going to get 100%. I would be super excited if we got about 75% total turnout. You know, are we ready? I would say at this point in time, yes. I mean, we're, we're still working very hard and diligently. My team is absolutely outstanding. I have an army behind me that is, we're, we're trying to cross all the Ts, dot all the Is. You know, we're, we're doing the heavy recruitment. I have teams putting together the PP supplies for the precincts, all of the supplies that they need there, our absentee voter counting boards. I mean, we are working so hard to make sure that, that this election goes as smooth as absolutely possible. So are, I mean, are we ready? I don't, you know, I, I want to say absolutely yes, but, you know, we're trying to plan for every contingency, but it's very difficult to do because you just don't know. This election is historic, this election is been, it's, it's just, honestly, it's just, it's historic. So we don't know what we're going to face, but I am, I am totally confident in our ability to have a, a relatively smooth, actually, a very smooth election, so.
So I would like to say that no matter what you've heard on the news, no matter what kind of rumors you've heard, whether it be in this state or another state, rest assured that we are having a great election here in Sterling Heights. We have nothing to worry about because we have great leadership, great foresight, and just get out there and vote. And you know that there's a lot of ways to do it, you know, so just do it. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, you have, you can have a lot of confidence that your vote is going to matter and be counted here in the city of Sterling Heights, and it's going to have a direct impact on your leaders, not just at the local level. I mean, what, what we do in Sterling Heights could very well determine who the next president is. So take that very seriously. It's a great honor for us to be able to, to do that, and it's, we find ourselves in a lucky position that we are in a city where the, our county matters, our state matters, and our city really matters for the entire nation. So we're blessed to be in that position. Man, I had some, one more that Ms. Zarco brought up, but I'm sure you need to go get, you're probably going to go back to work right now, so. Let's, let's adjourn before we think of any more questions to barrage our clerk with, and thank you all for participating. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion or no discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and get out and vote.